For the pledge of flag, please.
I pray that one has to.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to its broad and free speech, one nation under God, indivisible, and free of any justice for all.
All right. Thank you and welcome everyone for the August fifteenth town meeting. We have a, we have a short staff up here tonight. Jean Brumel is in Laurelwood getting her rehab on her new hip. On her new hip and Mary Jo wasn't doing well. So it's the three of us here this evening and we'll get through it. But I just wanted to, I think if we, if we don't vote as a group, I think still we have a quorum of three here and I think it's the majority of the quorum is how this works for our town. It's not that often we only have three of us, I don't think, but I have to say we're a very good looking bunch up here. So do we have a motion to approve the minutes of August first?
Some over.
We have a motion to approve?
Second.
Second, any discussion on the minutes. Hearing done, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Financial report and payment of the bills. We have a motion to approve financial report.
Some over.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion on the financial report. Hearing done, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right Lou, are you going to present the employee of the quarter?
No, I think budget amendments are next unless you want to skip over and do that.
Well.
Oh, it is?
Yeah, the employee of the quarter on the agenda, but I can do whatever you want to do.
We're going to do it, we're going to do it.
All right, let's do it.
Employee of the quarter for the second quarter of two thousand eighteen. Lieutenant Holly Ayers has served with the Elkton Police Department for twenty four years, working your way through the ranks and being promoted to lieutenant in two thousand fourteen. She's currently patrol commander. Lieutenant Ayers was selected as the town's outstanding employee for the second quarter of two thousand eighteen for extraordinary performance in identifying and coordinating removal of unlawful, unsanitary, and unhealthy encampments at various locations in town. Chief of Police Matthew Donnelly applauded Lieutenant Ayers for her efforts to lead a team of employees in clearing out and cleaning up town property along with private property where encampments have been established without the towns or the private property under Donnelly's permission. The recent milestone in the cleaning up of the unlawful encampments on private property involved forested property behind commercial plaza in Augustine, Norman Highway. Lieutenant Ayers coordinated the clearing of the encampments and the cleaning up of the trash by contractor hired by the property owner. Voting Chief Matthew Donnelly, Lieutenant Ayers took on a very difficult problem and a major blague of the town of Elkton and guided others to clean up problematic areas throughout the town while maintaining a sincere desire to provide help to those people who are experiencing homelessness. With her tenacious planning and organizational skills, town of Elkton has a better look and feel and a new sense of pride in developing amongst the business owners and town's people. We here recognize Lieutenant Holly Ayers for both her outstanding performance and as the town of Elkton's employee of the quarter of the second quarter of two thousand eighteen and we thank her for her great performance.
Holly, can we get you up here to take a picture with him?
Yes, of course.
Come on up here. Chief? We'll get the chief in here too. Congratulations.
We are Elkton.
Once more.
Got it, thank you.
Fantastic. And I have to tell you that the efforts that Holly has put forth, I can tell you it was well deserved honor and I, I know that you're doing the job and you're doing a fantastic job for our whole community and we're better off today than we were several months ago.
Thanks.
Thank you. Steve Rico, I think you're on with the budget amendments or is Louis on?
I think we can do budget amendments out of the way. Okay. I have seven budget amendments to present tonight, five of her last fiscal year. It's down the normal course of as we approach end of year, we accrue the final expenditures and revenues and we see where some items weren't budgeted or else went over budget, so we're adjusting that with these budget amendments now. These five for last fiscal year. Our first one is budget amendment number twenty eighteen zero nine, is to budget additional ninety-five hundred dollars from fund balance and to budget capital equipment in Mayor Fickers Department for the purchase of downtown speakers.
We have a motion to approve budget amendment two thousand eighteen dash oh nine.
Some over.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion on the budget amendment? Hearing done, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Budget amendment number twenty eighteen dash ten is to budget one hundred four thousand dollars out of intensified fund balance into municipal buildings account, the capital account. That was for the purchase of three things that were not budgeted during the course of the year. That was the purchase of the land to the, the, the future community center for seventy-four thousand six hundred forty-three dollars for the abandoned Honford Street property, six thousand thirty dollars and HPAC renovations to both the Alliance Building and to the waste retrieval plant where Ed Dow does all the most of the network.
We have a motion to approve two thousand eighteen dash ten budget amendment.
Some over.
We have a motion?
Second, I have a question.
And a second, any discussion?
The hundred and four thousand, I know that encompasses all three, but is that divvied up into certain amounts to come to a hundred and four thousand? Yes, it was around an amount from the seventy-fourth, just over seventy-fourth, just shy of seventy-five thousand dollars for the purchase of the land from the Ford event. It was a little bit over six thousand dollars for that burned out, abandoned property on Hollingsworth Street. And then the, then just short of twenty-three thousand dollars for both a HPA system, HPAC system for the Alliance Building and a new heating system for the building which Ed Dow does the metal fabricating for the town.
Okay, thanks, sir. Any other discussion? Hearing done, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Budget amendment number twenty eighteen dash eleven is to budget two hundred eighty-eight thousand dollars out of restricted fund balance for highway user revenue into Public Works Department for street repaving. And that is a portion of the fund balance that is restricted. It can only be spent for repaving projects and road maintenance and that represents an amount that we spent beyond the current yearly receipts. We have about seventy-hundred thousand dollars in the account from prior years.
Very good. Do we have a, a motion to approve budget amendment two thousand eighteen dash eleven?
Some over.
We have a motion?
Second.
And a second, any discussion on that? How much do we have left in that fund?
I think it's about seventy-hundred thousand coming into this year, it's out to be about that much. So we're fortunate we've been able to build that up over the years.
Very good, thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you.
Budget amendment number twenty eighteen dash twelve is to budget additional forty thousand dollars out of fund balance into line item for waste removal contract services that went over the amount that we initially had budgeted for the year.
We have a motion to approve budget amendment two thousand eighteen dash twelve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? And I'm assuming that that amount of money was towards our cleanup of the parks.
I think a lot of it was raised, that, that's correct.
Very good. Any other discussion? Hearing done, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you.
The final budget amendment number for FY twenty eighteen is number thirteen is to budget additional eighteen thousand dollars out of fund balance into Parks and Rec Department for capital and that's all related to Marina Park.
Vote right. We have a motion to approve budget amendment two thousand eighteen dash thirteen.
Some over.
Second. And a second, any discussion? The only discussion I have to say is that the boat ramp is in. I just wanted everyone to know that to get an opportunity, go down to Marina Park, the boat ramp is in and I believe that the attachment for the kayak launching side of it will be added on at some point.
Sure, I spoke with it now of the day and he's working on, taking after the dock. So that would, that should be done when we go.
And I can tell you that it survived the flood and it handled the flood very well that came through. And Katie, if you'd like to have some photographs, Lou has some great photographs if you'd like to have. Maybe give him a credit. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. And just to be clear, Steve, that is all of the two thousand eighteen, fiscal two thousand eighteen budget amendments, so we're pretty much closed out?
We're closed out, but we still don't know the bottom line because there are a lot of accruals and deferrals and booking of expenditures that we'll, as we look into the year. So this was our best estimate as the year ended for, and just because, I want to point out to you, just because it's budgeted, that is only means by which the budget balance, it doesn't mean that's actually an expenditure or use of it. It's not until the very end of the year, we compare all the revenues, all the expenditures and see if we were short or not short of the work. Just because it's budgeted, doesn't mean that that won't be used.
Very good. All right, let's get on to two thousand nineteen, so we have a couple.
Two budget amendments for current fiscal year. First one is twenty nineteen dash zero one is to budget seven thousand dollars in seize and forfeit as funds for the purpose of increasing the budget in Elkton Police Department for uniforms. That was not budgeted.
We have a motion to accept budget amendment two thousand nineteen dash one for seize funds.
Some over.
Second.
And a second. And question?
Chief, what basic upgrades were there?
Well, we haven't told them yet.
Okay.
What we're going to do is start outfitting most of the officers with a new vest carrier from the bulletproof vest. There's a handful of them that are presently wearing them and if you don't look at them very closely, you may not even realize that they're wearing them. What it is, is it allows them to wear their ballistic vest on the outside of the uniform. That way on days when it's hot and humid like it has been recently, they get back into the office, they can just pull that vest off and, you know, work on paperwork or do whatever it is that's in the office and then quickly put it back on and add to.
I know it's messy, but how cumbersome is it to add another piece to your body?
It, it, it's not, it's only adding a, a vest carrier. So when they have their vest on under their shirt, it's already in a, in a carrier, thinner one. So it'd just be like having it, not even really in it for sure.
Okay.
Just with the vest is being carried in.
Thanks. And, and real quickly, Steve or Chief, can you explain to us the seize funds, how we collect the seize funds?
Drug deal.
So when we make the arrest and there's X amount of dollars, we have to hold it for, until they go to court or?
Yes, and a lot of, a lot of our funds actually come from a part of plea deal where the person will just forfeit the funds on her own.
Very good. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, the last budget amendment is budget amendment number twenty nineteen dash zero two is to budget one hundred twenty-three thousand twenty-three dollars out of the fund balance that is restricted for forestation. These are fees that builders have to pay toward either reforestation of lands, they have to either reforest the lands that have disturbed or have to pay into the, into the fund and then this funds can only be used for very specific purposes. So there's basically two hundred fifty thousand dollars in that fund. The funds are separated only by when the, the area is in the critical area or not. So that two hundred fifty thousand dollars is going to be budgeted under municipal buildings capital account and that's for the purchase of the land that was spoken about, the, the so-called remaining lands of South Street.
Very good.
The forty-six plus acres.
We have a motion to approve budget amendment two thousand nineteen dash oh two.
Some over.
Second.
And a second, any discussion on that? Hearing done, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Steve.
You're welcome.
Very good. Next, we have a guest. I'd like to invite Ms. Roberta Johnson up from the Cecil County Health Department to talk about the overdose prevention and safe prescription disposal. Come on down, come on down and join us.
Where are I, you want me to go?
Yeah, sit right down there.
They saved that seat for you.
Oh, really?
We did.
Oh, wow. So we town hall has started.
There we go. We bring you right up front with us. Tell us what you're here to talk about this evening.
So good evening first and foremost. Again, my name is Roberta Johnson. I'm the overdose prevention coordinator here at the Cecil County Health Department, which is located right across the street. So I wanted to come on one to, one say thank you for allowing me to sit with you and just give you some information. Over the last few weeks, I have been visiting several town halls to just kind of give some information to the town about what is offered within the alcohol and drug recovery center and other services within the health department. So I actually left Elkton for last since, you know, we were right across the street. I wanted to kind of visit everybody else before I came to present to you. So the first thing on the agenda I have is overdose prevention response. So at the health department, we provide overdose prevention training for community members of, and with anyone who is interested in learning how to respond in an overdose situation. The program has been in effect since two thousand fourteen and so far we've trained over twenty-seven hundred people within the Cecil County area as well as the neighboring, neighboring states. And that number is quickly rising since my calendar for September is quickly filling for community agencies as well as towns that are requesting training for, you know, specific people within their community. And within the overdose prevention training, it teaches someone if, how to recognize different signs and symptoms, especially knowing that Cecil County as well as other areas is having a little bit of a problem with opioids. It's nice to kind of have the information and not need it, then need it and not have it. So I wanted to kind of bring that to the table because there are some people within Cecil County and in Elkton who do not know that that service is available. Like I said, there's no bias against who is trained. I've trained people in recovery homes. I have trained families who have lost family members. Again, there's no bias and people are, you know, quickly knowing that this is a service that's being offered and is definitely open to getting that, that training. In addition to that, within Cecil County, there are seven prescription drop boxes and I know I saw one lovely one in the hallway here at Town Hall, but those reasons, but those boxes were for straight safe prescription disposal practices. So I know we have seven within the county, however, we also have another portable method of disposal. So I don't know if anyone has seen these bags floating through the county. They probably came out of my office. When I inherited our office, I inherited seven boxes of detera bags sitting and so far they are all gone. So we have just, have distributed about fourteen hundred bags that the health department did purchase in order to provide an alternative way to, to basically dispose of medication if a person could not get to the boxes. Since then, we inherited about ten thousand more that is sitting in an office at the health department. However, we are quickly giving them out to different areas such as hospice, home health aids, Cecil College has a set, I believe the sheriff has a set. I brought you all some tonight too.
Thank you.
So we're giving them out to anywhere that is asking for them or that may be of need. So far with those bags, we've given out close to five thousand bags. In addition to, again, overdose prevention as well as the detera bags, I did bring some flyers for you for town hall, just saying we have a treatment on demand schedule where people can come in and if they need a help, we have counselors there, we have both rehab persons. We have many services available. I know some people here within the town don't realize that there's a wealth of information that's right down the street. With certain, circumstances, I've heard families just write a check in and send their child away to Florida and it's like, did you go down the street? It's a lot of services there and that may have saved you some money. So we have treatment on demand schedule, we have a both rehab person where they can help people find jobs, which has been very successful. We have counselors there to help with treatment options. We have outpatient therapy. So is anything a person would need to maybe get back on their feet, maybe right across the street? I guess last and final, there's, I don't know if anyone has noticed, the lovely big billboards down forty that has rewrite your script dot org on them. They're black, white, and yellow. Those billboards went up recently, it's in the last few months to kind of promote rewrite your script dot org, which is a site that has a wealth of information, not just for treatment purposes, but for basically daily skills. So we're promoting that site as well under the opioid misuse convention project to kind of get people if they're in need of different services that, there is a site that has everything there for you. I think I hit every one of them. Are there any questions?
I do have a few.
Sure.
I guess the, how do you use that bag? Is it, is it a pretty simple, is it, dissolve the medication or?
Yes, so it's actually pretty simple. So on the bag, in addition to this lovely sticker that's on there with my phone number just in case you need more, you would open the top of the bag and you would put any type of med, between forty-five pills, six ounces of liquid, or about six patches, you would put it in here, there's a, you fill it with actually a chemical in here, you put them in, you fill it halfway with water, you seal it, shake it, throw it in your trash. So some people actually like it more so because they feel bringing them to the boxes, they got to drive the medicine home and then they get here and then they got to put them in and they kind of, some people want a little bit more discretion.
Understand.
It's understandable. So they've been, we've been giving out these bags, we've given out a lot. And I guess in addition to that, these bags also been given out when people come in to refill their Narcan or to get training. So lately we've been getting actually several people coming in from Hollingsworth Manor, expressing a lot of concerns about overdoses that are occurring. They, from what we've been talking with the people, they're, you know, very open to having a training. I know they're having an event in two weeks out there and I just got the invitation to come to do overdose response training with their community. So hopefully it is well received and open. But they've been getting these bags as well in addition to anyone else that's come in to refill their prescription. So they're going out, so we still hope that if the meds are not within the home or not easy accessible, it may be that we'll cut down a little bit on overdoses.
I, I was traveling through Hartford County and I see they have a sign on Route forty that states how many overdoses happened during the year, how many happened during the month and, and how many people didn't make it. It seems to me that like one out of every eight die from an overdose. Now, is, is that a similar statistic that we have here in Cecil County?
So yeah, I actually just pulled the numbers too. So luckily we actually get data on a regular basis and the numbers actually from two thousand seventeen settled was at seventy-three overdoses fatalities and the five hundred and ten, a little over five hundred overdoses that were non-fatal. With that, it does break it down per area. Elkton is on a little up the higher end than the other areas of Cecil County. The other towns, I have visited them as well and expressed the concern and they're, you know, in the process of figuring out what to do for their community. I believe the numbers right now, up until now, I believe it's over thirty fatal and with about a hundred non, or maybe a little bit more than that.
Is, should we post those statistics or is that something that we shouldn't do? I, I guess I'm just throwing it out there. I see Hartford County does it. Does it, does it make a person that will open their eyes that one of these, one of these eight times, you're gonna, you're gonna die?
So within opioid prevention training, I try to put in some current information as well. So anyone that kind of takes the training gets the numbers as well as which substances on the rise, what substance is not as common but still being used, what, how many overdoses are based on a certain substance. I do actually chair the local overdose fatality review team where we discuss different cases on what could have maybe helped. So that information, I kind of tie it into, you know, with confidentiality into that training as well. So that they can get the information, like, you know, and kind of keep the way you're going, this may be you.
Okay. Does anyone from the board, you guys got a couple questions?
I just want to make a comment. Mr. Gibbons and myself, we actually was assisting a, a young man today and he was in need of some help physically and mentally. Two of your social workers, Ms. Cynthia Rose and Mrs. Mary Ann Redding, they both stopped and assisted him and during this time when we're trying to find support and help for him, they took it upon themselves knowing that that's their job. And they found, took him to the hospital, followed him through and had a medical system from there and got him into the VA hospital. So I just wanted to commend them for some of your staff members that work with you. They all know that, that their work was really, they appreciated myself and Commissioner Gibbons, so we were going to make sure, I didn't know you were going to be here, but I was going to mention that, but good time because after sixty-one years, it's the first time I've ever seen a social worker really stop and do something for somebody that just because they looked like they was in need.
Well, you know, I'm a social worker too, so good people, so.
I'm just, I'm, I'm sharing that with you. Sixty-one years, first time I've seen someone just actually do that, follow through and get some help for someone like that, so appreciate it.
Of those overdoses that have become fatal, basically what age groups are they, it's a divided, so millennials or is it an older person or young people's, well?
So it's a little bit of everything. So, but right now we're seeing that the older population is, is rising a little bit more so because of either the lack of accessible medication. So we have had cases where a person maybe not had the med and they took something else and maybe took too much. But we're also seeing people or young adults to the age of eighteen and twenty-four having a problem and we're seeing maybe in the middle as well. It just kind of depends on the situation, but I've seen various ages of this fatalities even with the non, non-fails.
Have you done anything as far as communicating with the school systems, what your attendance is now to educate us as well?
So luckily our lovely school district here in Cecil County, they have a system in place where if there is an overdose that happened, at one point, one month, there were like thirty-three children who had lost a parent for an overdose. And they have a system in place at the school district if there is a problem or they kind of know that bands, they're able to have some services for the kids there. In addition to that, all of, I would say Perryville High is trained in Narcan. I'm actually training all of the nurses in Narcan, I believe at the end of the month. Other officials, all assistant principals, the principals of the school district are trained as well. So they're definitely well aware of this information. They have detera, or they're going to figure out where to put it that, you know, safe and they're trained in how to respond immediately.
Very good. Roberta, thank you so much for that. Thank you for questioning. Mrs. Clark?
Yeah, I have a, first I'd like to commend you on your excellent presentation.
Thank you.
Excellent, excellent. And one point about a syringe, how are they disposed of?
So with syringes, we don't put them in the bag. So what I, the advice I got from medical, which and also due to personal and family reasons, I've had people dive back to use syringes. You would cap them. I know some people like twist them like toilet paper and put them like in a toilet paper roll or just in case it slips out. If you have like a tied laundry bottle, like the heavy plastic laundry detergent, you can wrap them and put them in there.
I know there's areas, you just see the line around.
Yes, um, so, yeah, so that's the, the safest way to dispose of them. And again, so because we can't put them in a bag and you can't bring to box.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you so much.
So I actually have a box for you.
We want the box, make sure we get it to Michelle.
You can leave it right there.
You can leave it here, we'll get it.
And I have some other stuff. See, I have some stuff.
Yes.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
Mayor, question to her.
Mr. Eddie Grunder, go ahead, sorry, I mean Eddie Gander.
A lot of the overdoses, it's assumed that it's heroin if they find it in or something laying that is drug, pad for the next in the body, but it takes months for the toxology reports to come back. Are your figures based on the actual toxology reports or just that they're overdoses of some nature?
So I recently learned that there's a lot within the process when a person does overdose and there's many steps that it has to go through. By the time it gets to me, it's been through the police, it's been through the ME, it's been through, so I'm getting the final toxicology report and the data is built off of that. We're lately seeing that there are overdoses of several substances, but it will tell you which was like the main detective. Sorry. You're welcome. was like the main detector. And I don't know if I like their DVD shirt. My doll stayed along.
Just leave it right there.
Respond. Wherever you want to put it, and then I can get it.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thanks.
Okay, Louie, you're on. Hey, we have the Pennsylvania Avenue Water Lines Project, and a bid open for that. And we received, um, five bids for the work, the project. And the first one is from the, uh, uh, Dixolo. Uh, Dixolo bids, um, a total of one hundred and sixty-four thousand, two hundred dollars for the project. One hundred and sixty-four thousand, two hundred dollars from Dixolo. What was that number again?
What was the first number?
One sixty-four. One sixty-four, two hundred, okay. Uh, ECM bids, uh, total of one hundred and sixty-one thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars. One sixty-one, two eighty from ECM.
You said ACM or ECM?
Next one's Lindstrom, uh, Corporation, or X Brady Company, I'm sorry. Uh, their total bid is two hundred and nine thousand, five hundred dollars. Two, two hundred and nine thousand, five hundred. Next one's from Meadows Construction, Inc. Meadows bids four hundred and fifty-nine thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. I've got plenty more, fifty-nine, two fifty. It must be close planet. And the last one, Rebol Construction. Rebol, uh, bids one hundred and twenty-seven thousand, one hundred and twenty-nine dollars and forty-six cents. One hundred and twenty-seven thousand.
What was the engineer's estimate?
I don't have, I don't have.
Hundred, hundred and thirty-two.
Hundred and thirty-two.
Very good. So it appears that, uh, Rebol Construction is a little better. I have Ms. Hamley, uh, review all the bids, and I would tend to recommend that Rebol gets that project for a hundred and twenty-seven thousand, one hundred and twenty-nine dollars and forty-six cents.
Do we have a motion to approve Rebol contention upon review of engineers, and Dan Hamley and Town Administrator?
So who, second?
Any discussion? Hearing none at all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Lou. That's all I have. Gee, I have nothing new to report tonight. Earl?
I promised to get my report from last time. So, uh, the basketball program, uh, two sessions, it was fifty-two registered, um, students. We had five-star soccer, which was age three to six, July the ninth, through August the thirty-first, seventy registered. Uh, the camp preschool, ages three to fives, there were three sessions, twenty registered. Uh, the summer camp, age is, uh, five to twelve. It ran from June the eighteenth through August the twenty-fourth. And that was, um, uh, I think it was total of nine weeks. There was the first week ninety-three, second ninety-eight, third eighty-seven, fourth was ninety-three, fifth was eighty-four, sixth was eighty, seventh was eighty-four, and eighth was eighty-two, and the final was eighty. And the fall and winter activities are online right now. You can register starting in August the twenty-seventh. That's my report.
Thank you.
Louis, we received an email from you today, and Dan's here. So what is the exact, the real status of Delaware Avenue? I understand it's going to be closed on Thursday.
It just, it got changed, the state highway, you know, right now.
Just give us an update.
Delaware, Delaware Avenue's open now. It'll be open on Thursday. It'll be closed after nine o'clock on Friday, when they put out the contractor and start taking out the, um, debris, which was, uh, from, from Park Creek working its way down. So, so it'll be now, open Thursday, it'll be closed Friday from like nine to three, and open back up the weekend.
Now, I understand the conditions are there, and certainly I come through there, and Mr. Kids out there playing football here in Tri-State. I just wonder what has to be done for them to never get back there, if they get back there this season.
Stop raining.
Uh, oh, stop raining.
The, the main, main thing is, we had the park open last Friday, and then with the flood hit on Monday, which is the worst time. So, you know, just unfortunately, because the flood plain saturates and it doesn't dry out. So, you know, so as we, it says we can already cut it if it dries out. That's kind of what we're with. Our goal is to open the park up over the week, at least the walking track, and then the rest, as it dries out, we, you know, continue cleaning as we go. So, as long as it lets us, we jump on it.
So if a family member is scheduled for a birthday party Saturday, should I suggest to help them find another location?
I wouldn't. Unless, unless it's south, you know, because.
Because you're not sure it's going to be suitable for Saturday. Other than it's going to be open Friday, I mean, closed Friday, and then open up on, you know, Saturday.
But, but I would also recommend that the, uh, parks and rec contact all the individuals that have rentals.
They normally do.
That would be great. I, I don't think that's your responsibility.
Well, the, the question was, would it be open this weekend, so?
Probably won't be.
This is, if it dries out, that's what I'm saying. We can see what happens. The good news, it wasn't as bad the second time, it was best the first time. So, so now, since we get on it, we'll get open, so.
I think the amount of debris that we have seen come down from Pennsylvania, uh, along the whole route has been unbelievable. And, and I, 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 I think that there's still, well, I can see out my window at my home, that there's still another pile. So one more rain, it's gonna, it's gonna dam it up again. So I think we've got a series of floods that's gonna happen because I think there's these pockets of debris. When I say debris, debris that'll fill this room up, that, uh, are just kind of like hanging there, ready to break loose during another storm, and it's gonna cause another flood. It just can't get through Delaware Avenue.
So do you have erosion in the back of your block?
Yeah, we have a lot of erosion. Yep. Anything else, Charles, though? All right, this is the time of the meeting we opened up before, for anyone that has anything positive to say about the town of Elton tonight, or anything you want to say tonight. Mr. Dwight Hare?
I just have a question, and it's been discussed before. The community center, that, we're talking about the property back to the school.
That is correct.
That, uh, and that, that hundred and four thousand, the largest part of that is for that. But that's county property, right? And I thought the town hits up, and where they want to swap properties, it wouldn't be that high a cost.
We did, we did, actually. Uh, we charged the county for, for the fees at Gilpin.
That's what I thought.
We did. And this was, and they paid us.
Okay.
So we paid them back. So it was a, it was a swap of the fees.
Okay, very good. Thank you. That's what I thought, I heard you say.
Mm-hmm. Is that correct? Am I, that's what it was. Anyone else? Mrs. Clark?
Aye. I wasn't going to say anything, uh, too much about this, but talking about that flood, there's nothing that can really be done at this period about that flood.
I wish there could be. I really do. And we've been very fortunate. Up till this year, we've had, uh, I think they said it rained twice. It rained for thirty-two straight days, and then rained again for twenty-eight straight days. So I think, uh, they only, they said it only rained twice this year, but, uh, I think that we've just had a, a crazy flow of a rainstorm. I think it's coming up from the south. It comes straight up, and, and I don't know what kind of weather pattern this is, but I expect more flooding this year. And we haven't even hit hurricane season yet.
I can give you a little history. I'm older than anybody else here, but does anybody here remember the houses on Water Street? Mr. Flower's mine. You're that old?
The houses on Water Street.
Okay, that first red house, it stood there. Yeah, that's where my husband was born in nineteen thirty. And the next little white house was Purnell's. And the next house was Mr. Robinson. I can remember the floods coming in there, going out, coming in, going out. And then I remember the little white house burned, and they go to the little bungalow. Do you remember Storch's root beer? That little place that had Storch's root beer? We had that, and I sold it. People came into the nice mortgage, flooded one time, rusted all their equipment.
Mm-hmm.
They moved out, left me with a nice little bungalow for nothing. Sold the house for ten thousand dollars for the town. But it's not getting any better, and it'll never be any better. And it's gonna be flat ground, it's down, not in my lifetime.
I don't believe that, uh, when we did the studies back in ninety-seven, I think there was a study done in seventy-eight, there was a study done in nineteen fifty-two or fifty-three, the, the answer.
And the money's wasted, the money.
It, it was. The answer, uh, has always been that if there was a dam.
That's right.
But, uh, north of us, uh, on the Big Al Creek, where it would have culled the debris and the, uh, uh, water, I think that, but I think at the time, when the mayor commissioners in the seventies, by reading back at the old minutes, they were concerned that Mr. DuPont was gonna control their water. And this was the major water source for the town of Elton, and, uh, it just never happened. If it was ever offered today, I think I would be, I think I would have my hand up, 'cause I know that they can't take our water. I mean, we have, there's rights that we have. But back then, uh, everyone was a little nervous.
And I, you know, I, it breaks my heart because I know what we went through, to see the parish foundation and all the people lose their money. It's horrible.
It is.
Nothing can be done about it.
Nothing can be done.
And I, I don't know whether Mr. Hamley would like this or not, but I worry about my town employees out there, the disease. I mean, just one step on one sharp piece of glass, it doesn't get a cut. How quickly do they get first aid, or what do they, they have MRSA and all these things. It's tragic for these people out there.
It, it absolutely is.
Do they have any, uh?
I think Dan has them well-trained, though.
With the health department?
Oh, yeah. We've got, everything we get, considering these in place. So they get caught, we, we take care of them.
I, I, you know, I think about that. In my profession, I think about all this stuff floating down. You don't know what it is. You step on something, you reach for something. It's gotcha.
Well, thank you. Anything else?
No.
Anyone else have anything to say this evening? Seeing none, this meeting's adjourned. Thank you.